Hanson.
President.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement?
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the Woods County Clerk of Oklahoma. I certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting.
Consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member decides to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Addition of items of new business to the agenda?
There are none.
Minutes of the August 5th, 2019, regular meeting. Can we read them all?
Yes, ma'am.
Approval of the finance report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fundraisers, and vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds. No, we don't go that far. Whoa, approval of the activity fundraisers.
Okay, we'll go back up to 3.2, our minutes from the August 5th board meeting. We did not see any changes or additions to the meeting made to that. We'll look at the finance report, 3.3. Just to kind of give you a picture of comparison for July and August between this year and last, we continue to see a drop in gross production. We've talked about that previously, that we would see that. We continue to see that drop. We're also down in our other chargeable areas, and so we continue to monitor that. Our Public Schools is in good shape, gross production. Our gross production collection is still better than most, but it is down from what we've seen in the past. If you look at the next page on that attachment, made a couple of charts just for comparison of our revenue and expense from year to year from FY '19 to FY '20. And it's just a monthly comparison there, and you can see that we really don't start collecting our idyllic or our major collections until December and January. And so our expenses and our revenue as compared from year to year is really pretty similar, okay? And so that red line is the expense and the blue line is the revenue, okay? So any questions about the finance report that you might have? Okay, if we looked at the activity fund report, just a couple of funds that you'll see, that you might notice some changes from last month to this. Number 801 is our football account. They completed their gold card fundraiser, so there has been an increase in the deposit in their account. And then number 903, that is our insurance for the Chromebooks at the high school, and you can see an increase there in that account. We look at 3.5, our fundraisers. We have two fundraisers to approve tonight. First is the cheerleading fundraiser, and we'll talk about later, an honor that they've received. But they have done a fundraiser request to be able to accept some donations to offset a trip they would like the board to approve to take. And then there's also a request for Trac. Trac is going to be doing a concession stand at a football game, and they have not turned that in, and Mr. Durkey caught that, so they are turning that in to be able to run the concession stand, I believe, at next week's game. And that is all I have. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend that we approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda item. Those items referenced in 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '20: 4.1, general fund as referenced; 4.2, building fund as referenced; 4.3, child nutrition fund as referenced; and 4.4, gift fund as referenced.
So, excuse me, we'll start with that, with our general fund, 4.1. Just a couple of the purchase orders that you see in that. Purchase order number 263 for $5,900 with integrity. That was to fix some guttering and downspouts in the roof of the old bell tower at Longfellow. Purchase order number 264, $15,755 with admentum. That is a computer software company that houses a couple of our programs that are used throughout the district, from study island to reading aids. Purchase order number 292 and 293, those are, that's a music curriculum that we purchased for the high school vocal and band, and it also be used at middle school. Purchase order number 298 with Fair Plumbing for $6,600, that is a new HVAC unit at Longfellow and the library. Purchase order number 302, Apple MacBooks. We purchased five MacBooks for our media production class that Mr. Broad and Mr. Eckhart have started this year. Purchase order number 304, PCS Adventures, $6,695. Those are drones that we purchased for our Principles of Technology and Aeronautics class with Mr. Broad and Ms. Tyree. Purchase order number 305 also relates to that class as we purchased six robotic kits for that new class that they're teaching. Purchase order number 311, a large purchaser for $23,421. That was a purchase of active panels. We purchased two at the middle school, two at the high school, one for Longfellow and one at Lincoln. We also purchased some mobile smartboard or mobile active panels at these sites so that they're able to use those in locations like cafeteria, library, a little multipurpose even for staff meetings or faculty meetings. Purchase order number 323, $150,000 is Rev Coach, and that is our new activity bus purchase. They are putting on graphics to the bus, and we are expecting to pick it up, I believe Mr. Ellis said, next Wednesday. He will go down and pick that one up. Purchase order number 326, $9,571.50 is Renaissance Learning. That is our accelerated reader program for our students from pre-K through eighth grade. It has worked well with our alignment and fits with our strategic plan with regard to literacy. Purchase order number 334, Quaver Music. That is, again, music curriculum that we have purchased for our high school and middle school band. It is lessons that help to integrate the music with critical thinking skills. They can use integrate their active panels in those classes also. The payroll general fund expenditures are for some paraprofessionals, hires that we made, and some help that we had last month in Moa. We had no building fund purchase order expenses this month in 4.2. In 4.3, our child nutrition fund, a couple to highlight there. Purchase order number 15 is an open purchase order with Highland Dairy. Purchase order number 16, $2,000 with Fair Plumbing. We had, we were required by the state to add end washing sinks in certain locations at our elementarys. Previously, we had been grandfathered in, but they decided that now we needed to add those, and so Verlita took care of those and got that worked out, and those have all been installed with regard to our state health inspection. And purchase order 19, that was the repairs of ovens at the high school pilot light difficulties, and so that company comes out of Oklahoma City and works on that commercial. We have nothing out of 4.4, our gift fund. Have any questions? If there are none, I would recommend approval of our general fund, 4.1, building fund, 4.2, our child nutrition fund, 4.3. I would make that motion. Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes. This time I'll turn it over to Mr. Potter. We have been working on strategic planning and the implementation of that plan, and thank our administrators for a job well done. It's a large task, and we're finding that out each day as we meet and work through it. But they're doing a great job, and so I would let Mr. Potter take over and talk about his area.
Real quickly, I was the administrator that was on the personnel committee that we talked about through, and so we've gone through, you're going to get, this is the first of many of these, that each month that you're going to get a real brief snapshot of the work that we've been doing within our different committees. Kelly Parker is kind of the self-appointed chairman of our curriculum or our committee, so he, he was instrumental in everything that we've done from the very beginning of the strategic plan when we met as big groups to do that. He actually came and spoke to some of our high school kids this past week and did an outstanding job there, talking about leadership and different things which meets each little points on our strategic plan along the way. So he's been a valuable asset for me, serving on this committee, and Mrs. Martini, we both are in this personnel committee thing together. So he's going to give you a brief rundown of everything that we've done, but I can't stress enough how important it is and how the value that we place on our community members that are serving on these committees with us. And you're going to hear this every week as these other administrators, or every month, as these other administrators come and talk to you about different parts of the strategic plan. It truly is a collaborative effort between everybody, and you're going to find out that we're doing some really good things for this district, and it's come over the course of the year. You will be highly impressed. Several of you have been on those committees and working on that, and so I'm going to let Kelly do his thing, but I do appreciate him being on our committee and his input is valuable.
Well, thank you. First of all, I do want to say, because you are going to get a bunch of these, but I, board members going through with this strategic planning process, Lieutenant Argo, this has been great. I think it's going to be wonderful for our entire community, and it's been a real privilege to get to be able to serve on this with Mr. Potter and the rest of the group that was out there. But our group was the personnel group, and we had a few initiatives to schools that we identified for the schools to work on. You got a handout there, and I'm going to skip to page number three. The first two pages will kind of go through and tell you what each of the school sites did in terms of each of the goal areas, but I'm just going to go over the summary. It starts on page three. For summer initiatives, they did address all the initiatives that were identified. They didn't identify any roadblocks or significant challenges to being able to do so, but the administrators reached out to several other schools, Tulsa Claremore, Bartlesville, Collinsville, Ponca City, Pahuska, and maybe a couple others, to see how they implemented PLCs and their schedules to be most effective. They interviewed several schools about how they scheduled those. Mr. Potter has shared some things with different campuses on, as far as an article goes, on different methods that are being used, and the elementary principals have all been working together, making conference calls to create a structure for their PLC agendas. It's not yet been released to the teachers, but it's still being worked on. There were also, there was also an emphasis placed on contacting education colleges throughout Oklahoma to seek more student teachers and post-available positions to their job posting websites. You know, we are, it's difficult to recruit to Alba unless you've been to Alba, and so to try and get more contact with the outside world, we thought this was very important, and the administrators have created a list of colleges, and they're getting exposure on their job boards for teachers. They have created, they're trying to create a common credential that would allow principals to quickly reference when posting jobs, and it was, that list has been compiled and shared with the administrative team. The third item from the summer was developing a recruitment packet to connect potential employees, both educators as well as sports staff, with opportunities in our community as far as local resources, jobs for spouses, housing, churches, and other community resources. And administrators work with the Chamber of Commerce and are using the welcome packet that the Chamber has as part of that effort, and then Mr. Argo has composed a letter that will go out with those packets to kind of introduce the prospects to our district. This fall, they are scheduling the PLC times by grade level and departments with their agendas and guiding questions for each meeting. They are evaluating some different strategies for retention and job satisfaction, and every staff member is going to be involved in their annual professional learning focus plans with self-selected areas for improvement. The, coming up this winter and spring, there's a few more activities which aren't really, they haven't really started on any of it officially yet, but in the winter, they'll be working on an exit interview process to determine the reasons why people leave, knowing that there are some reasons that are completely valid, and there are some reasons that are things that we need to fix as a district. So they'll be doing that. And then next spring, they'll be working to develop a needs assessment for professional development needs and as, I believe, as individuals, both as individuals and as a district as a whole, developing professional development plans, seeking professional development providers to implement the plan, both using in-house experts as well as people from, you know, beyond our district. And then we'll be attending career fairs at statewide universities. And then I'll be back in May to hopefully tell you about all the things that we've accomplished in fall, winter, and spring.
Thank you, Kelly. You don't have any questions?
On behalf of the board, thank you for your time, and thank you for the committees. After all the hours you spent, what was the best thing you saw come out of strategic plan and the biggest challenge you saw come out of strategic planning?
You know, it was very well organized, and in that it was, it was easy to get everybody brought together with a common vision. So I think we truly left that room, but even though we had different areas of focus, I think we had a really common, a good common vision for what we want to see for our district. What are the biggest challenges I see? As with any strategic plan, there's the temptation to get off to a good start and then plant that thing on the shelf and not continue to do the work, but I, I think there've been some good processes that are established with the group that brought the planning process to us, that as long as the board and administration are diligent and they want the strategic plan to drive what goes on in the district, I think there's buy-in from the community. So I think you can get past those challenges.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service because you will keep us on track, and we appreciate that. So thank you for doing what's best for our community and our school district.
You guys keep me on track.
Well, no promises there, but I'll do the best I can. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Potter.
I might add, real quickly, just to give you an update, one of the fourth objectives was to look at our resources as a district, and we continue to look at our resources from a facility, technology, and transportation point of view. And so Mr. Ellis is forming a transportation committee to develop a plan for how we're going to purchase and a rotation for vehicles. And so you'll be able to look at something like that. We're shooting for that in the spring, and with Capable Zion as well, she's forming a separate technology committee. And so they will be getting some drafts or documents to you all that can keep you up to date and can help shape our decision-making as we move forward in those two areas. I might tell you also that our administrators are working with the School Board Association to enter our building assessment tool numbers as we speak. And so we are going through and evaluating our buildings and our facilities, and so they are working towards that right now. We, I've been in communication with Triarc recently to kind of see where we're at with our facilities. You know, we looked at improvements to our Trac, our art room, softball, ag farm, and so there's, there's many projects that we have that we're looking at, and hopefully in the next week or two, we'll get that committee together and begin to review some of those plans that Triarc has drawn for us. Any questions that you might have about strategic?
Thank you. Resignations or reassignments?
Okay, we have one resignation. Bishop Hendricks has resigned from the district and signed voluntary separation. And then Terry Chapman is no longer going to be driving route bus for us, and we will address his replacement letter on the, in the agenda. And I jumped down my communication channel, so I'm already there.
Item per business. 6.1, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve an out-of-state travel request for the FFA sponsors and members to attend the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana on October 30th through November the 2nd, 2019.
This is a routine agenda item. Our FFA officers, for them to be able to travel to the state convention, I would ask the board to approve this agenda item.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
Is that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, or is it during the week?
So it is.
27th is Monday.
It's Sunday because whole country's on.
It's kind of, the dates of travel, if you look at your dates of travel on the request for out-of-state travel, that is, and I'll have my phone with me, so somebody have to tell you what those days, October 30th.
Starts on Wednesday.
Wednesday, Saturday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday to Saturday.
Slater.
Yeah.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
6.2, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve an out-of-state travel request for the AHS cheer team and sponsors to attend the NCA Senior Night National Competition in Dallas, Texas, January 31st through April 2nd.
This summer, our cheerleading team participated.
It's April.
Yeah. We're going to be gone the whole three months, but as far as that, we're going to be gone. I don't know, we just jumped up there.
Having a competition. The cheerleading team participated in a camp this summer, and through their performance and hard work at this camp, they received an invitation to this competition in Dallas, and I would ask the board to approve this out-of-state travel request.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
That's kind of a big deal.
That is a fact, it's opportunity. Congratulations.
Thank you. They work really, really hard.
They have to.
They, our sponsor worked really hard. She really cares about it and pushes those girls to be better, so.
That's great.
It's good. They're proud of them.
Yes, absolutely. 6.3, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve superintendent to review results of the National Criminal History Record searches for fiscal year '20.
With approval of this agenda item, I review all the background checks that we have for all employees, and I would ask the board to approve this.
I would make the motion to review this at 6.3.
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
6.4, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve offer of employment to Dakota Buckholz as a route driver, bus driver for 2019 school year.
This agenda item addresses our resignation from Terry Chapman. Mr. Buckholz will be driving a route bus for us through the year pending the approval of this item.
I make the motion that we approve Dakota Buckholz as the bus driver.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
6.5, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve the Internal Activities Committee for fiscal year '20 as listed. Administrator Les Potter, Mike Sklar, Dustin Horn, Misty Wunder, Vice Wunder, Randy Nation, and parent Sean Caldwell.
And so we have this agenda item on each year, and it is for this committee to review absences above our 10-day policy. And so I would recommend the board that we approve this committee. So moved.
Second. Second. Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
6.6, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve the Gifted and Talented Committee for fiscal year '20. Parents of elementary students Alex Mads and Kendra Snabel. Teachers of elementary students Karen Bead and Danielle Kudrow. Parent of middle school students Jessica Freed. Teacher of middle school students Casey Adair. Parent of high school students Melanie Gassford. Teacher of high school students Dalton Beeler. Counselors Eileen Littlefield, J.C. Heaton, and Misty Vice Wunder, and Administrator Stephanie Martini.
So one of the action steps for our strategic plan was to review the makeup of this committee. And if you remember, for those of you that were involved in the plan, reviewing and looking at our enrichment program was something that our community felt like was really important. So this is the first step to that process, and I want to thank Ms. Martini and all of our administrators for going back and reviewing the makeup of this committee, ensuring that we have representation from our parents throughout the district and also our counselors as a part of this committee mission. And so I would recommend it's approved.
I would make the motion to review this at 6.6 as presented.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
6.7, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve the revised extra duty assignments for fiscal year '20.
Okay, we have three additions to our extra duty assignments that we had not done on the list last month. And so we have Ty Hooper as our middle school football coach, sixth grade boys basketball. We have Chance Davis, middle school girls softball assistant coach. And then we have Jaclyn Weathers. Jaclyn is going to, has stepped up and is going to lead our academic team at the high school. Mrs. Parsons did a fantastic job with that group, and there were some kids that were excited about being a part of that program, and so Miss Weathers will take over that team.
Did we previously have an assistant softball coach at the middle school that would play this?
No, we have not. We have, one of the things we're trying to do, change is, when we can, we want to find assistance, we'll, as many of those programs as we can. That's really good.
I'd make the motion to approve 6.7 as presented.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
6.8, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve the following professional development stipends for all certified and non-certified employees as of December 1st, 2019. Stipend number one, completed mandated professional development by October 31st, 2019. Stipend number two, attended the professional development presentation on October 2nd, 2019.
So stipend number one will be contingent on completion of online courses completed by by staff. Stipend number two would be contingent on attendance to Mark Perna. He will come as a motivational speaker and talks about getting our students career-ready and life-ready. That will be from 4:30 to 6:00 if approved by the board on October 2. This agenda item really addresses some of what Kelly and Les talked about this year, recruiting and retaining personnel. And so, I would ask the board that they would approve stipend number one for $2,000 to completion of the mandated professional development, and a $500 stipend for attendance at the Mark Perna speaking engagement.
Make the motion to re-approve stipend number one and stipend number two as referenced in 6.8. Oh, I'm sorry, stipend number one in the amount of $2,000, stipend number two in the amount of $500, as required to complete professional development by October 31 and to attend professional development presentation on October 2.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Number seven, proposed executive session to discuss staff negotiation and AEA contract under by Oklahoma State Section 307b2. Vote to renew inter-ventative session. Still moved?
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.